And we are live and recording.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Madam Deputy City Clerk. My name is Daniel Hubble. Good evening and welcome to the June 20, June 7th, 2023 Special Hybrid Planning Commission Meeting. Like I mentioned, my name is Daniel Hubble. I am chairing tonight's Planning Commission Meeting and we are coming to you via Zoom as those of you in the public that are watching this may know there has been some issue at City Hall preventing us from using that location. So thank you for joining us virtually. With that, we will take the role commissioners. If you could please have your microphones turned on for the roll call and Deputy City Clerk, Deb Estrada will please call the roll.
Thank you, sir. Chair Hubble.
Present.
Vice Chair Michael Murphy.
Present.
Commissioner Kate Accuse.
Present.
Commissioner Carolyn Bozeman.
Present.
Commissioner Michael Curry.
Present.
Mister, excuse me. Commissioner Victor Rishis.
Here.
And Commissioner Adam Regan.
Present.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you and welcome back everyone. Before we, I want to make one point before we move to our public appearances, just because I know there was some questions that were asked of me. We will address this later in the evening, but for those that may have heard through the grapevine, this will be my last meeting as a member of the Planning Commission. So I'll, I'll address it later, but I know that a few folks reached out and said that they hadn't heard anything officially and I didn't want the folks to be sitting on questioning anything that was going on this evening. So when we get to other business at the end, we will talk about what's happening next after that. So with that, our first item on the agenda is public appearances. This is the opportunity for anyone to speak in front of the commission about issues of concern. We also have a public hearing this evening. I do know that we have a few individuals to speak during that, but for items not related to the public hearing, the public appearances would be the opportunity to do so. My understanding Deputy City Clerk is that we do not have anyone this evening who has requested to appear before us.
That's correct. As of 4:00 PM this evening, no one had requested to speak under public appearances.
Great. Hearing none, we will move past appearances then and we will move to the first item on the agenda, which is a public hearing related to ZTR 23-001 Master Shoreline Master Program Amendment. That's a mouthful. This public hearing is to deliberate the proposed amendments to the shoreline master program related to the uses permitted. Waterward of the ordinary high watermark. Individuals wishing to make public comment on this agenda item may do so either in person or via Zoom. The public hearing is now open as of 6:07 this evening. I do understand we have two individuals signed up to speak. For those that do provide public testimony, please speak audibly. State your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes, although we may have some dispensation there depending on the circumstances. Deb will call your name when it is your turn to speak. And with that, Deb.
Thank you, Chair. Are the first person scheduled to speak this evening is Mr. Gardner Morelli. Yeah, let me see. There he is. One moment. Mr. Morelli, can you hear us?
Hey. Okay, hold on. Hey, Deb.
Yes, sir.
I am in the public forum, but the your system is not working.
So what we need you to do is move to a different room so that you don't have the echo.
So I just turned off the, I turned off the speakers off the TV. So I'm actually on my phone at the same time. So this okay.
Sounds like you found a workaround. Thank you.
I did. I did. I am in the formal area. I am the public tonight. I am at your facility at the Kennedy Center. So I am fulfilling our legal obligations to do this right. So excellent. Everyone. Thank you. Gardner Morelli, representing the Mercer Beach Club. My address is 8454 West Mercer Way. Number one, I want to say thank you to everyone. Thank you to staff. It's a journey. We're not done, but we are getting closer. And late yesterday I sent a formal review that was put together in collaboration with myself and our team to review the most recent proposed codes for marinas and boat facilities. We think we're very close to establishing a working code that is good for all the existing organizations on the island. And I wanted to just talk a few minutes in more layman terms on the three topics that we sent you the, the information on. The first one is kind of a combined topic. It's the grading and the tied to the swim dock. You should have received some letters from highly respected medical professional professionals on, on the concerns on the grading that meets the 60% opening that's tied to the proposed code. And, and what it has as from an impact on kids and I would say people doing sports activities on our swim dock. And, and what I want to say is that the code doesn't specify any manufacturer. What the code does, it specifies a percentage opening. And when you start getting to bigger and bigger openings, the types of materials that you can use that can still provide strength for the grading and durability becomes less and less. So in the case on what was spelled out, the only median of material that can be used that I've been able to find waterfront construction who does this all the time is providing us with something called Fiber Gate. And I'm using one brand that I use as the example, but it's a fiberglass product. And this product, which I have samples here that I'm going to leave. I am a tactile type person. I, and, and what I showed to the doctors and it was like, is this the type of material that small kids can actively play on for long periods of time and not hurt themselves? And you should have received a couple of letters on their professional opinions on what they saw. And so so what I did is that I really wanted to show you and I brought a sample of the types of products that approved into tape in today's code. And this is just an unintended consequence of not considering a system approach, but more of just using throwing out some numbers on what you're trying to accomplish with one product. Our swim dock is a place where our kids and adults to give them an opportunity to enjoy time and connect with the lake. There's diving, there's sliding, and yes, at times there's horse playing on this structure. It's an activity structure. The swim dock will have no connection with the marina. It will be a separate structure on the lake. And what we're asking that it is not lumped into the same exact category as a marina and the specifications that go for a marina specific type of structure. We ask for consideration to allow us to use the grading that is allowed under the current code for residential docks and and hopefully the information that we provided for you, there was a reliable analysis as well as information from Brad from Northwest Environmental. It will give you more comfort and data around how if you look at a system, thick structures, X amount of distance above the water in, in being used at the same time with specific type of opening gratings. It's not just the size of the grading, it's the angle of the gratings on how that allows the light to get into the lake. And hopefully that type of information will help you understand that, you know, you look at as a system. The other thing we wanted to point out is that cities like Bellevue and Kirkland rely on state level, a higher level code versus it being driven down specifically into your, into the city's code. So it allows it to change more easily as well as to, to take into considerations of every project. So it's, it's a complex topic. And we hope that you understand that we're being, it feels like we're being pushed into a corner where it's not going to be a fun experience for anybody. The other item is a floating moorage outer dock. We communicated multiple times, the conditions on the lake, they're getting rougher due to manmade devices like the wake boats as well as the environment, the storms are getting stronger. And there is a need for safety of property and life, and that's very important to us. And we created our marina, the outer dock to access our outer moorage slips, but in the least impactful way to the lake. And what that solution was, it was a floating structure because it requires fewer piles into the lake. We want to make sure that this will be allowed and not considered once we apply for a permit that it's a wave attenuator. Brad from Northwest Environmental provided technical information on how there's a difference between a floating structure that could have wave attenuation characteristics versus jetties and other things that are built up from the lake bed, which do impact flow, fish, sediment, and everything like that. So we're asking for consideration to change the language that is in the proposed, in the, in the proposed code. And then if there's still struggle on that, I do want the city to look inside themselves and look at your own, and look at what you've done in alignment with your own existing code. If you look at Groveland Beach in your May 2019 Pier in Shoreline Improvement Project, the first bullet on what you guys did there was the installation of a wave attenuator waiter and buoys beyond the large pier. So you know, what, what we, what we ask is that there, you know, that we don't, we don't get thrown under the bus on this and that we look at the big picture. So and that's all I have. I do say thank you. I know that there might be some more discussions. We stand ready to sit down with staff and work through these few, you know, those, these last few items. And we do appreciate everything you guys have done up until now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morelli. And I know you've invested a lot of time in working with the staff, so I thank you for your patience and cooperation through the process. With that, Deb, who is our second speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Debbie Hansen is currently on video right now. And so she is our next individual to speak.
Great. Welcome, Debbie.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Debbie Hansen and I am a Mercer Island resident, longtime resident, and I don't have much additional to add beyond what Gardner has already said this evening. In fact, I wasn't even planning to speak, but other than to bring up just the surface material that's being considered for the the swim structure, the activity platform, the fiberglass grading, I have a close and personal relationship with because I, I tripped on some at the beach club over in the, the dock, the moorage area a couple of years ago, and that's on me. I was just going way too fast and I tripped. But when I fell, I, I really cut my knee on that stuff pretty badly. So you know, we know, we know that the intent partly also is just to provide a great surface to slow little people down and, and to prevent slipping. But at the same time, if you do slip and fall on something like that, it, it can be sharp. So I just, I'm here just to ask the commission to take another look at the materials for that part of the project. And I think that's all. Last question.
I don't think so. Thank you, Debbie, for joining us.
Yep. Thanks.
Uh, let's see Deputy City Clerk, are there any other members waiting to speak?
No, sir, they're not.
All right. With that, and again, thanking our two speakers this evening, and with no further testimony, it is now 6:18 PM and I will close the public hearing. I missed my little gavel, so I'll do a little clap. Excellent. So that takes us to basically the second and last item here, which is discussion and potential action related to ZTR 23-001 related to the draft marina regulations. And just to bring everyone else who is listening up to speed. If there is and this is a second review, obviously, we're going to have some Q and A and discussion related to this. And I believe some presentation from our city planners. And at that point, I believe there are some recommended motions provided in the staff plan and we can decide at that point whether or not we're ready to move forward with a recommendation to the city council. With that, I believe we have Molly McGuire here. Molly. Is it to you?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent.
All right. So the purpose of today's meeting is to get the planning commissions a recommendation on the proposed draft regulations for marinas to the amendments to the SMP. Here's where we are in the process. In April, the planning commission gave initial input on the proposed draft regulations and staff has made changes in response to that feedback. So that's what we'll be presenting tonight. And today is the joint public hearing with the Department of Ecology where we hope to get a recommendation on these draft regulations to take to city council after the initial review by ecology. So April 26, the planning commission reviewed the draft marina regulations and provided initial feedback. Staff took that feedback and implemented changes where appropriate. And this resulted in 11 changes which are discussed in greater detail in the staff memo. I'll briefly go over each change in this presentation and then Adam will go over public comments and a couple of other things that have come up in the last couple of days. And then we'll ask for your recommendation at the end. So the first revision deals with the shoreline conditional use permit versus shoreline substantial development permit. During the April 26 meeting, staff was asked to explore a tiered approach that would allow marinas to redevelop through the shoreline substantial development process. And new marinas would go through the shoreline conditional use permit process. Staff explored some options and had several meetings with the Department of Ecology where it was determined that this approach would not be feasible. Current regulations do already allow for this kind of tiered approach through the processes that are already in place with the like for like replacement of existing facilities. So for this reason, and a few others I'll point out on the next slide, the planning commission needs to make a recommendation on one permitting process for marinas as a use in the SMP. So staff and ecology both recommend that all marinas, whether redeveloped existing over the threshold already determined and the like for like replacement or a new must go through the shoreline conditional use permit process. And this recommendation is primarily made for the following two reasons. One being that the shoreline conditional use permit process allows for a greater opportunity for public input. Neighbors of future development sites have an opportunity to participate in a public hearing process. And conditions can be placed on the decision to mitigate unforeseen impacts at the discretion of the hearing examiner. The substantial development permit process only allows for a 30 day public comment period without the opportunity for a public hearing. And then the other reason being that recommending to recommend a shrine conditionally use permit over a shrine substantial development permit is that the city would need to conduct a citywide cumulative impacts analysis for a shore and substantial development permit. And this would significantly delay the adoption of the city code of amendment since ecology would not approve the amendment without this cumulative impact study. Impacts of, of a proposed facility would be analyzed separately through the conditional use permit process as part of the application instead of at the forefront analyzing the cumulative impact citywide. The impacts of just the proposed facility would be analyzed application. So this is why we would recommend going with the showing conditional use permit process as recommended by staff and ecology. The next revision is regarding public access. So in order to be eligible to develop marina on a property, the applicant must show significant public access. One of these criteria was to be owned and operated by a public agency and the planning commission requested that this be changed to a property owned or operated by the city of Mercer Island instead. So we made that change. And then revision three is that any proposed marina would also require a demand analysis that would analyze the total number of commercial mortgage spaces within a one mile radius, which was changed to one mile radius on the city of Mercer Island so that commercial spaces across the lake would not be included in this analysis. So that change was also made. It looks like there's a question. I'm not sure if we should wait until the end or into those now.
My, my apologies, Carolyn. Go ahead.
No, what would you prefer? Would you like to wait? It, it might be easier to just ask them in context to save some time, I think.
Yeah, go, go ahead, Carol.
Okay, so I'm regarding public access and changing it so that the property would have to be owned by the mercy, city of Mercer Island. So I'm kind of wondering about that. Who owns the existing? Maybe I'm confusing boat launch with mortgage facility. So I guess why would you, would, is there a possibility that the state would ever own something like this or? You know, I'm just wondering if there's any, any concerns with limiting just to Mercer Island. Maybe I'm just missing something. I probably am. Or, or imagining things.
I'll jump in here. So the public access requirement here requiring that they be developed by the city of Versor Island would be a local choice. So we, we, we have the option of limiting it this way. And if, if it were as originally drafted, if the language were owned and operated by a public agency, that would allow the state to develop a marina. So this is, this is more focused in on just the city. And that would be, I mean, it's certainly possible that the state could at some time want to develop a marina, but there isn't necessarily a plan to do that now.
Yeah, okay. I, I think I was probably confusing boat launch and marina and thinking about the state's property that they own under I-90 or something, but maybe it's a bit far fetched to be concerned about that. Okay.
Anything else? Or I think are we ready to keep rolling?
One more question also. The terms shows significant public access. Is that a term that we came up with here on Mercer Island? Or does that come out of the state law at some? In some context?
It is a unique phrase in our code.
Okay.
That doesn't come from the lack.
Okay. The reason I ask is there is a definition of public access in the city code. And it just means it's accessible to the general public. So I, I feel a little bit like we're sort of parsing an existing definition, calling it significant public access. You know, it's either public access or it isn't, but.
In this case, because there, the definition wouldn't necessarily come into play too much because we have the standards explaining what that, what that term means here in the code. So we're saying like they must provide significant public access. And here's what significant public access means.
Okay, okay. I'm, I'm with that. Thank you.
Great, Molly.
All right. So revision four was to add a simple change to the general requirements best management practices section changing including to such as to avoid limiting the practices to only those listed and excluding other practices that might be necessary to implement. Revision five is to change all instances of piers, stocks and floats to read overwater structures to clarify and differentiate between what would be considered a float for the purposes of implementing these standards and other floating components such as buoys. There was some concern over that in the last meeting. So I think just clarifying by saying overwater structures versus pure stocks and floats resolves that concern. And this was changed throughout the draft anytime that appears stocks and floats appears.
Is it a new, new question, Carolyn?
Yes, I do have a new question. Okay, so we've added the term overwater structures, but I was wondering, there's no definition in the code for overwater structures. There are definitions in the code for piers and docks. There's no definition for floats. So I just wondered. It would seem to me that it would be helpful to have a definition for overwater structures if, if we're going forward with this term. Is there some reason why we, we didn't include one?
It was, it wasn't included in the draft because I, I don't think that there was a need for that definition because we have a definition for a structure. And then overwater, the common understanding of overwater being above the water or over the water. I think those two things combined were sufficient to not need another definition.
All right. Thanks.
Victor, you have a question?
Yes, the, the question that I have here is by lumping everything into overwater structures, isn't this what is causing the issue that that both Ms. Hanson and Mr. Morelli pointed out, which is suddenly we have docks that are really swim docks being subject to rules that are more applicable to a, a boating dock. And therefore we have structures that may not be compatible with the usage of a swim dock.
So the, the concern with the swim dock is, is as I understand it is primarily about the grading requirements, not necessarily about them getting grouped in with docks and piers. A swim dock, whether it's called a swim dock or just a dock would still be subject to the same standards. Whether we use overwater structures or call it a dock. So the, the concern from the comment, I think, is primarily about the grading requirement. And when we get to the end, we'll talk about public comments and response to those comments. And I think we can resolve that grading concern with a simple edit tonight.
Adam?
Um, I think, yeah, Victor does raise a good point. I'm, I'm looking at the two grading requirements. And I guess like, let's, let's say a, a slide was installed on top of a swim dock. One, you could read, right? That, that, that slide would have to be graded, right? Would that count as a overwater structure?
If we wouldn't require the slide to be graded, no.
Okay. So that's not a slide on top of a a a swim dock is that slide is not considered a structure then? I don't have the definition of structure in front of me.
Yeah, it would, it would be an accessory to that, that overwater.
An accessory. Okay.
So, so that wouldn't, the, the grading part, I think we can
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
We'll get into that in quite a bit more detail here in a few minutes.
I just wanted to make sure that, yeah, slide is differentiated from the intent of it, which would be the, the flat part of a pier. So, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. And so revision six was to strike pump out facilities from the draft based on feedback. That was a simple change. And seven is to change remove the word public from the standard requiring restrooms, which would amend the regulations to require at least one restroom, which can be access restricted upwind of the ordinary high watermark. I think that alleviates some of the concerns about having the restroom open to the public. Revision eight is to change the revegetation timeline of disturbing vegetation from 48 hours after construction to be completed prior to final building permit inspection, which is a more feasible and enforceable timeline that can be done by our city inspectors at the time of final inspection. that can be done by our city inspectors um, at the time of final inspection. Revision nine is to add at least to the pile spacing requirement of eighteen feet apart that was missing in the last draft. That was just an oversight. Um, and then during the initial feedback, the planning commission suggested removing the minimum pile spacing to allow piles to be spaced based on structural engineering requirements or environmental considerations. Um, staff believes that the draft language as proposed would be sufficient to allow alternative spacing. Um, the applicant would just need to demonstrate that the alternative spacing is um, reduces the number of piles, um, which is a pretty um, low standard for alternative spacing. Um, so I think that would be sufficient. Um, and we based on state guidance, we would need that um, minimum in there.
Commissioner Rigam?
Had a quick question there. Let's say our, our uh, pier is a multiple of eighteen feet plus nine. Um, what if is, we, we just want to make sure that it's not that we, we can't set it as does not increase the number of piles, but it must reduce it. Is that, am I reading the state? The state requirements correctly?
Yeah, the way that, that code requirement would read is that we need to reduce the total number of piles.
Okay, okay. So, okay. Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Um, so revision ten is um, in response to the planning commission's suggestion of removing um, the maximum length of a hundred and fifty feet. So staff revised the length requirement section to instead tie back to the demand analysis so that the applicant must justify the proposed length of the Marina based on determined need such as a number of size and type of vessels to be moored. Um, so they'll just have to justify why they want um, a length with no uh, maximum length on there. And finally, revision eleven is to include swim facilities in the definition of marinas. So that way, um, all of the proposed um, kind of facilities are included in that definition. Right? And here I'll pass it over to Adam to discuss the city's response to Mercer Island Beach Club's comments um, regarding the grading requirements. Um, if there's no other questions?
Uh, Victor, I'll go to you first.
Can, can you go back one slide? So, um, and I don't have the, the full, the full document in front of me. I just have the, the presentation. Do we just find swim facilities there? And following on my earlier question, is a swim dock considered a swim facility? What is a swim, what is a swim facility?
So the swim facility would be a facility for swimming. I mean, I don't think that's another one where we probably don't need to establish a definition for it. Um, in, in places in the code where we use a term and it's not defined specifically in the code, we would use like the uh, dictionary definition of the term. So here, a swim facility would be a, a facility that facilitates swimming.
So facility to me con- con- connotates um, a building. So you know, in, in, I think all of the cases that we're considering, none of them have a, a, a s- swimming building. They, um, I think they all have some sort of swimming beach or swimming area. But that's not a facility.
Well, and a, a dock would be a swim structure, right? A swim dock would be a structure that's dedicated to swimming. So I think it would fall within the kind of comment reading there. I mean, the, the ultimate concern here is that we don't want to establish a regulation that would prohibit a swim dock, right? Like that's the, the concern. And, and as, as constructed here, this definition wouldn't preclude a swim dock. Uh, the swim dock would fall within that swim facility.
Okay.
Then.
Oh, sorry, uh, Vice Chair Murphy.
Uh, Adam, just to follow up on Victor's question, because I think it, it, it is a good question. Um, would it be better to swap out the word facilities for a structure since we use overwater structures?
That, that would be an alternative we could do. Um, we could do that um, as part of your recommendations tonight. I, I don't think that would uh, fundamentally change the meeting here, one way or the other.
Okay. Uh, all right. You can keep going.
Yeah, we'll keep rolling here. So, um, uh, actually, Molly, I think you can stop sharing your screen now. Um, we've run through the bulk of the slides. Um, so the, we received some public comments um, in advance of the public hearing tonight. Um, we received uh, three public, written public comments and then the two um, speakers at the meeting today. There, those comments have raised three issues. Uh, the letter from the beach club articulates kind of the three issues. And the, the first two, the the use of the term overwater structures and the grading requirements are pretty closely entwined um, for, for the purposes of what we're looking at here tonight. And the concern is that, um, as, as you've heard, is that there, the grading requirements um, a- as constructed in the draft would um, potentially require uh, a larger grading or a, a more transparent grading for overwater structures. And after looking at the comment and looking at the concern, I think the, um, what we're, what we propose tonight is that we amend that um, as part of the recommendation. We amend that grading requirement. Um, let me get the, the exact section out here. So it'd be L six. It, under L six A, we can get the exact numbers when we, when we get there. But we can amend that requirement to, to basically just say that, you know, overwater structures must be graded in compliance with state and federal law. Um, what we've been trying to do with this draft is i- incorporate some of the other regulations that we have around grading for other facilities um, and square those with the state law. But at the end of the day, they really just need to comply with the state law. And so I think that uh, that amendment should take care of the concern about um, having additional grading than what they're, than the minimum that they're required. And it should satisfy the, the need, the state requirements are pretty um, stringent for grading. And so we don't necessarily need to go above and beyond that. So I think that's a change that we can make tonight in response to those comments uh, that, that should resolve that concern about, um, you know, sixty percent grading versus forty percent grading. And just hold them to the state and federal standards. There was another component of the beach club's letter um, about breakwaters and wave attenuators. Uh, and for that, um, as you're considering, or if you are considering that section, what the, essentially what the letter was asking was that we allow floating wave attenuators um, as an, as an amendment to nineteen thirteen zero three zero. Is that zero three zero? Sorry, let me get my notes here. Sorry, nineteen thirteen zero four zero. The, the letters proposing that we amend that to allow a floating breakwater. Um, that's a, that's a pretty significant departure from what we've already been talking about and would require some additional analysis um, on the part of staff um, before making another recommendation. And it would also, it's enough of a departure from what we've already, um, what we've already discussed at the public hearing, that we would need to hold another public hearing um, in order to consider that kind of amendment to the table there because it's, it's uh, substantially different from what we, what we had the public hearing on tonight and have had public hearings on in the past. Uh, so the, the implications of pursuing allowing a floating breakwater are that um, we would then need to um, hold another uh, study session uh, similar to like we did last month. And then we would hold another public hearing um, regarding that change to the table. So that would, that's, I just wanted to provide that as, and that's the implication of if we take that, if we take that path. Uh, I see three hands up.
And we come off of mute. Uh, we'll start with the commissioner votesman.
Hey, um, first I want to go back to the, the one about grading. Um, you mentioned that we could solve the problem by just saying that we comply with state law. What does state law require in terms of grading, in terms of these percentages and so on and so forth?
That's a good question. Um, there, the state requirements for grading are pretty complicated. Um, they have, there's a lot of if this, then that kind of logic in the, in the requirement. So it doesn't doesn't translate to a kind of uh, simple explanation, but essentially docks above a certain width require more grading. Um, and that is slightly variable depending on the orientation of the dock um, in relation to the shoreline. But e- either way, I guess the, the the punchline here is that either way, the facility has to comply with those state standards, whether we adopt something different. And so all we're saying is that we would then condition approval that they get approval from the state for those grading, for the grading design of the dock.
Okay, thank you. And then the second question I have is um, pertains to the wave attenuator. So, you know, in my experience as a planning commission, we've been at this point, you know, many times before where we're at the night where we want to make a recommendation, but we come across something. And we've had a public hearing and then we have to decide whether to, you know, have another public hearing. And i- it seems like there's some flexibility as to you know, whether another public hearing is required. And I, I can't really quite understand why in this case, you know, we couldn't make the change in the draft without another public hearing when we've had other situations where we've made other changes in draft codes and not had a public hearing. So could you clarify, you know, why you feel we have to have another public hearing on this one?
Sure. So typically with a public hearing, you, when you advertise it, you're providing notice of what those, what those amendments you're considering are. And you're giving the public notification that, that this is what we're considering. And these are kind of the boundaries of what we're considering. So if you go outside of those boundaries, you then have to hold another public hearing. Because we didn't advertise that there would be an amendment to um, the policy around uh, breakwaters. That's a substantive de- departure from what we advertised and noticed as um, having a public hearing. It's also worth noting on the floating, on uh, breakwaters, there's, there's some additional analysis that would need to be done because we have policies in our, in our comprehensive plan that specifically address breakwaters. And we would need to look at whether or not a comprehensive plan amendment would also be required in addition to a code amendment. So there's, there's a lot of pieces to that. It's not just simply changing a sentence. And it's substantively different than what we advertised. Um, whereas, so a good example of, of a non-substantive change is like if we, if we amend the, the standard for grading tonight, we've already advertised that we're going to be talking about a grading standard for marinas because we, that, that's part of what we advertised for. But that's not a departure from what we.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, all right, Victor?
Uh, I just want to follow up on the wave attenuator. Um, so following up on Mr. Morelli's comment. Um, if this is so significant, how did, how did we get that wave attenuator put in at Groveland? I think it was Groveland that he referred to, right?
Yeah, I, I can't comment on that. I didn't work on the permit. I don't have the, the file in front of me. So I, I don't know exactly how that, um, that development was permitted.
Yeah, seems like we may have some inconsistency here. Um, we're holding them to a different standard.
Well, it's worth pointing out that they, the um, the beach club hasn't applied for anything yet. And we haven't told them one way or another that something that they're proposing is not allowed. Um, so until we have a, an application, we can't say whether or not a specific proposal would be allowed or wouldn't be allowed. So there's, there's a lot of pieces uh, ahead of, or.
But it, it sounds like their proposal will have a wave attenuator.
If, if it has a wave attenuator, as the code is currently constructed, it would not be allowed to have a wave attenuator.
But if they have that, but under that code, Groveland built a dock with a wave attenuator.
I, I can't speak to that development because I don't, don't have the file in front of me.
Kate, sorry.
Hi. Thanks for recognizing me, Mr. Chair. Um, co-comment regarding the word facility. Um, I work in a public works agency and facility is pretty synonymous with general infrastructure. So I'm less concerned about changing that word. We could change it to infrastructure or structure. Gets a little redundant. Um, in terms of the grading issue, I'm wonder, I'm wondering if it's worthwhile just in terms of guidance to the public to add the definition of functional grading in the WAC. Um, that means the percent open area of the grading that is not covered or blocked by any objects such as structural components, framing wood, flotation tubs, or objects placed on the surface of the grading. Um, WFW does offer some guidance on functional grading and a calculation for functional grading. I think a lot of the concern that I'm hearing from the beach club comes from the specificity. And I agree wholeheartedly with Adam that if we just defer to the WAC, um, that's the Washington Administrative Code, then we get out of a lot of these situations. Um, the assumption that a um, flotation um, tub um, that would be considered a wave attenuator. Um, I don't, I don't understand the, that assumption where that came from in the, in the notes. Um, I don't think that the beach club is proposing a very, very large, like we have at Groveland Park. So I don't know how how relevant that is. I, I assume they want floats that go under the dock and the state's function of functional grading means that you can have those. Um, you're just going to have to calculate what area is covered by floats. And you're going to have enough grading on the other surfaces that you meet that fifty percent requirement for a dock that's six feet. Um, then just generally, I mean, I, it's, it's not super duper complicated. There's a, there's a thirty percent standard and a fifty percent standard in the WAC. Um, I sent that to a couple of folks that have asked about that over um, city email. So, um, I think if, if folks actually read the WAC and see what it says, and perhaps we offer the public the definition of functional grading and um, maybe even on our guidance documents, not necessarily in the code. Um, explain what that is and, and have links to the WFW calculations that will really people understand what is and isn't allowed. Um, I don't think I'd want to allow a lot more of those giant wave attenuators like Groveland has. They're not pretty. But um, floats like most marinas would have are definitely allowed under the WAC.
Vice Chair Murphy?
Yeah, I think, um, Adam's solution on the grading seems to make sense. Um, it seems to comply with the law and what the concerns were of the beach club in trying to comply with both standards. Um, so I think that's a good and simple solution. The issue of a breakwater, um, or wave attenuator, um, as I understand the beach club's proposal is that it is simply a, a floating uh, day, day dock, day pier, whatever, um, that might have some um, benefits. that might have some benefits attenuating some of the waves. I think it's a matter of how it's presented. Because as I understand, the pier itself would be permitted under the code. But if you're trying to sell it as something else, then that could be a problem. I think, I think I'm concerned that Adam is correct that the proposed language in the memo might go too far and would require much more analysis than is warranted by this if we can simply steer this in the right direction.
Commissioner Boatsman.
I'm intrigued by what Michael Murphy has suggested here. I mean, is it, is it essential to call a, of, what, what are they calling it? A floating day, day pier or something? Is it essential to call that a breakwater? I mean, why is it being called a breakwater? It, can we solve this by not calling it a breakwater?
Well, so it'll, they can build a dock to, to Mike Murphy's point, like under the proposed code that we're looking at. An applicant could build a dock that is 10 feet wide. And it could be perpendicular or sorry, parallel to the shoreline. And if it's not a breakwater, if it's not purpose-built to be a breakwater, that, that would be allowed. But if it is a purpose-built breakwater, it's called that. I mean, it's, it does depend on what's, what's in the application as to whether or not something would be allowed. And I think it's it's important to, to point out, but again, that we can't necessarily, there's a, there's a lot of hypotheticals and so it, it really does depend on the contents of an application, whether or not something is allowed. And I think the more important question now is, is if, if we want to move, if the planning commission wants to move forward with looking at allowing breakwaters, that will require additional process. And, and we can, we can do that analysis. I don't know. But we, we saw the comments the same time that you did. So it's not clear how much that would come of the process that would add to this deliberation. But that, that can be something that the planning commission upset exploring or if we, we can allow a pier and a dock that's 10 feet wide, we can just continue with this. Looking at what the beach club is proposing or not proposing because they haven't submitted an application. Because we don't have like a hard plan set from them, we can't necessarily say yes or no, that, that thing that they're proposing be allowed. That's, that's a hypothetical that we can't really get into with this. And honestly, we shouldn't get into it because it's, because it is so hypothetical to an application.
Well, you know, I, I, I also have been taking care to not look at this from the standpoint of what works for the beach club because it's, it's one boss, it's one application, but we're looking at the future. So, you know, I, at the, at the same point, by the same measure, we have to, I mean, it's a great example. But when we see what they're dealing with, it reminds us of, oh, here's a real world example with where this thing we just put in our draft code. You know, there's some problems here. So, you know, it's, it's a mixed bag there, but I guess, you know, you know, maybe that's something since you have been discussing these matters with the beach club and, you know, taking advantage of this situation where, you know, we're learning about this real, real world need out there. It would be interesting to see, you know, you know, how they feel about this. And do they, do they consider it a, a breakwater? And would an inj, would a licensed professional engineer call this a breakwater? You know, and if not, then, you know, I, I don't see how we, why we have to, that this has to sort of stop everything in its tracks.
Commissioner Rashish.
In response to Vice Chair Murphy as well as Commissioner Boatsman. I think the issue, I, 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 as, as I understand it, the issue is not that the beach club or shore club or, or covenant shores wants to build a breakwater. I think the concern is that they're going to get down a path and someone is going to say, and, and I don't know whether someone is at the city level or at the state level, but someone is going to say, that's not a floating dock, that's a breakwater. And at that point, the, 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 the regulations that we're drafting cease to be useful to any of our shoreline organizations. So the concern is that, hey, we want to build a breakwater. The concern is, hey, we don't want our floating dock to be interpreted and subject to the rules of a breakwater. And it's a bit of a catch 22 situation because Adam's right. We don't have, we don't have a current proposal in front of us in terms of what they want to build. However, if we go down this path and, and we don't, we don't make a consideration for how the breakwater will be determined, determined, then we could end up with unusable regulations.
Okay, Commissioner Cuse.
I just want to reiterate and emphasize that I think we have a responsibility to look at the WAC as commissioners. I feel we're getting a little circular and I'm almost like to the point of like point of order chair. We're, we're re-chatting and it's very speculative. You know, the WAC definitely allows floating docks. Floats are allowed, docks are allowed, grading is specified for either based on the width of these things. It's a bit of a red herring for me at this point and I'm, I'm hoping we can move on.
Um, all right, I hear you there. Carolyn, do you have anything additional to add beyond what you've already, any, any new points?
Of course. I would like to just read, I, I think in response to what Victor said, I think we really have more of a problem with a vague definition of what a breakwater is. And I'm not quite sure that clearing up what the definition of a breakwater is wouldn't, you know, necessarily require a public hearing. I'd like to hear the interpretation of that. So the definition of a breakwater is a protective structure usually built offshore for the purpose of protecting the shoreline of harbor areas from wave action. So, you know, it doesn't say whether that structure is floating or whether it's something that's built from the bottom of the, from, from the bottom of the shore, I'm not quite getting the right term, up to the, the surface. So I, I mean clarification, I, I think that beach club is just worried that we're going to look at that definition and call their, their, you know, day pier a breakwater because it's not clear. So couldn't we just clarify that definition perhaps?
We can do that. I see Allison has her hand up. I'm sure you've got something to add.
Yeah, this was prior to Carolyn's comments. Maybe I'll come back to that. I just wanted to shed a little light onto how this initial, this issue initially emerged and kind of the, the provenance of this and, and why it came up. When the beach club came in for a pre-application meeting, I think it was two years ago at this point. The plans they submitted for review from the city, what they're now calling the day dock, the outer dock, was labeled on the plans wave attenuation dock. Those words were written on it. And the city noted that because we've recently been reviewing the plans for the Luther Burbank Dock rebuild. And in the review from the Department of Ecology of that facility, there was a similarly labeled dock structure that said wave attenuation. And ecology actually called it out in their comments and said, hey, that sounds like a breakwater. You guys don't allow breakwaters. We don't think you can permit this. And so kind of noticing the similarity between these two situations, we brought this up to the beach club earlier in the discussion this spring and said, just so you know, we don't think we'll be able to permit a wave attenuation dock. Because that is considered a breakwater. And it was literally those words printed on the plan that initiated that concern. It wasn't that we saw something about the structure of the dock that was proposed.
Yeah, I'm getting the sense and I will apologize for my opining on this, but it sounds like a little bit of breaking into jail on the part of the the folks talking about this, like bringing up an issue that may not be an issue just based on the history that you mentioned and it's, I think, causing a little bit of clear discord and sort of setting us in the wrong direction. I think the key part of this and my interpretation and notwithstanding, you know, my guess is that there is definitions as you, whether they're in our code or in, in state code somewhere, I am sure that definitions exist for breakwaters and all of those items. So my, my recommendation is, is, you know, based on the definition that Adam said that, you know, we chalk this up to some language discrepancies and how one group is talking about something that they're doing and I might recommend that everyone look at, you know, I, I think Adam, you said this the right way, which is, you know, there are purpose-built structures and there are structures that are built for a different purpose that also may have unintended consequences and those are regulated very differently. And to, you know, think about that when, you know, for anyone who's listening to this, think about that as you are applying, uh, you know, applying for these things. So when we get to the further like overall discussion of this, if, if there is the desire to make amendment of some kind, of course, we can entertain that, but at least that's kind of the summary of what I've heard from the staff here. So unless there's someone that vociferously disagrees with that and feels that we need to address it further, I don't know what else we have to cover before we get into broader dialogue, Adam.
That, that concludes the issues that were brought up in the, in the public comments. I think, I think we discussed those pretty thoroughly here.
Great.
So if if we, if the grading amendment, so that piece that I talked about as something that we can amend there, if you want to move forward with that, let me get the number. So that would be an amendment to the proposed section L six A three. And that would be amended to read over water structures must be graded in compliance with state and federal law. So if that can, that piece of it can be amended with a, with the motion to recommend or a motion just for that one amendment, however, however you want to do it. But that's the, that's the line section for that grading.
L six A, and do you have, do you have specific proposed language to change there or?
Yeah, so would strike the existing three or it's, it's incorrectly numbered as four, but it would strike the existing three and just read over water structures must be graded in compliance with state and federal law.
Got it.
So get rid of those, those pieces that have, if it's this wide, it must be this much.
Got it. Okay, I see it. So when we get to that, we can address that. Carolyn, do you have something specific about that or more general?
I was just going to point out that I couldn't find a number three. So yeah, that's all.
Yeah, we will refer to it as item four just because it's labeled that way and you guys can update the numbering as a scribbler's error when the time comes. Okay, so I guess to keep me honest here, Adam and Allison, unless there is additional discussion prior to, and we've had a lot of good questions here. Unless there's, I guess there's two courses of action. We could have a recommendation to postpone action on this for some stated reason, or we could entertain a motion to approve the draft regulations as provided in attachment A, and then we can make amendments as necessary as we go through if there are any details that wish to be changed. So I guess that would be, first I want to correct, there's nothing other in business or discussion that you have on the table. Is that correct, Adam?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So Victor, before we go to that, do you have a question or?
I do. Or the, the change that we just discussed, was that L six A three, which is listed as four?
Yes.
Are we making the same change to what would be four and is listed as five as well?
Yes, that five would just get struck. So it would just be over water structures must be graded in compliance with state and federal.
Got it.
So when the time comes, we can make that, someone can make that amendment. Carolyn, do you have a question before we entertain a motion of some kind?
Yeah, I was gonna, I still have just questions about the substance of this ordinance. And I, I find that when you have a, when it's, when there's an emotion on the table, it becomes harder to just simply ask questions. I think it might be useful for us to as a group, finish answering some of our questions about things before we get a motion on the table.
Oh, great. How many questions do you have?
Maybe four or five.
All right. Well, if you can move through those quickly, please, and then we'll, I'll see what answers we can hopefully resolve for you.
Sure, maybe, maybe other people have questions as well. So um, my first one, it concerns the definition of marina. So I remember seeing this proposed definition before and being surprised by the inclusion of boat sales, fuel service, repair and service of watercraft. It just seems odd to include those services in marinas on Mercer Island. Those sound like they're polluting. You know, more elaborate than what is needed at the types of marinas that we have here. So why are those things included?
Those are, so marinas are typically commercial operations and those are the types of services that are provided at marinas often. So they're included as not exclusive list of the types of things that might take place in the working now.
I'm glad you use that word commercial because the type of marinas we're looking at are not commercial marinas. You know, they're clubs or they're public. Some kind of puzzle as to why, why to include those things. Does anyone else have a concern with that as well or?
So, so.
Go ahead, Victor.
Can, can we respond or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, let's discuss.
So my, from my perspective, I think in the previous meeting, we said, we are not just doing this for the existing entities. We're doing this for the future and I believe that someone pointed out that, you know, you could do something at Luther Burbank. You've pointed out that there's space at, at under I-90 on the east side. So it's not out of the realm of possibilities, although I agree, right? Currently it's not conceivable, but it's possible.
You know, thanks for that comment. It's, it's just that within our draft ordinance, the only marinas we're allowing or if the city of Mercer Island owns it. Or if it's, let me see here. If it's open to the general public and access not limited, hmm, well, maybe that's a commercial. Did, did you intend this to be commercial staff? Potentially?
I mean, potentially, I think. I mean, potentially, I think commercial uh marinas are typically. Not like a residential structure, they're not a private uh. Structure unless it's like a yacht club or a beach club where they have. Access restricted to a membership organization, a membership in an organization. Uh, and so the the definition just reflects that, yeah.
Okay, I I guess um, I was just seeing it in a little bit more narrow light. Thank you. I think. I don't know, I I could keep going, but I see Adam and Kate have their hands up, so.
I'm just waiting for you to finish so I can call on them, Carolyn. So um I'll go to Adam then if you have a question.
Well, but yeah, I'm gonna go way deeper into this this ordinance, three pages down. So if they have something about this, I would recommend.
Okay, Adam, thank you.
Oh, yeah, um, I think, yeah, though. I guess Commissioner Boatsman touched on a topic that also concerned me. I was gonna go after her, but I think, yeah, um. You know, I if I look back to our original request that was here, this was, you know, they wanted to update and rebuild existing facilities. And they wanted us to use a scup for redevelopment. Um, I know this was touched upon in our last meeting, but I don't see anything. In the code in response to it, but I'm concerned with opening up the door for new developments. Um, you know, we were asked to provide a route for redevelopment of existing marinas to. Improve their usability and their reduce their environmental impact. So I would like to. I would personally like to see a number seven, um, essentially saying that marinas are only allowed. If they're located where there was a marina already, you know, on January first of this year. Um, I know words like highly unlikely were used, but I mean. I I wouldn't want to rely on that, and if. A need or desire to create a new marina comes up in the future, then. I think the code should be revisited now, but I think. I I would protect for only allowing a path for redevelopment of existing marinas.
Where's number seven in the code, Adam?
Uh, so it would be, it would be a new one for me.
Oh, oh, I see, add a add a number seven. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that I I guess I I don't know if I have to formally. Pose the motion, but that's kind of. What I would, yeah. I would, I would like to see, I would like to not open the door for future development. Without. You know. Let's give a path for redevelopment, and that's it.
I've had a similar concern, but I I haven't been able to see how that fits in, so. I'm I'm glad to hear your comment.
So that's definitely something that you would want to, um, Adam, when we get a motion on the floor that you could offer up as an amendment. I don't know the. Unintended consequences or even viability of making that, given the. Context of it and whether that falls afoul of the public hearing rules uh. But um. Uh, yeah, uh, so that that's if you if you want to make an amendment uh. Later, that would be the the way to go about doing that. Commissioner Acuse.
Yeah, I would support somebody proposing that just to get it on the table and get a thumbs up, thumbs down on it. Um, I. I disagree strongly um. That we shouldn't have that use open. I said this last time, but I'll just repeat it, that I think it's extremely unlikely that. One or more of those facilities would actually be built based on the cost. Um, and I think it's very, very unfair that. Only people who can afford to go to the beach club would have access to a marina on Mercer Island. So if a developer was willing to take that risk. And make something publicly available so that people who aren't wealthy and have boats on the island could have a place. To service their boats or more it um. You know, I think there's a little bit of an equity issue there. Um, but yeah, if you want to. Put the motion to a vote, I think it would be a good way to kind of rather than rinsing and repeating the same arguments we made last time. I think it'd be a good way to just get through that one.
Great. Okay, Carolyn, uh, next question.
Okay, uh. Here. Okay, so. Again, regarding who's allowed to. You know, obtain approval of a new marina. We've got owned by the city of Mercer Island, that's pretty clear, and you know, I think. Uh, safe. Marina is open to the general public and access not limited, so we've just kind of begun start started talking about that. So that could be a commercial marina, for example. But then it's it says also B, the marina is owned or operated by an organization or corporation serving at least fifty people. Uh, I guess I thought it should be a higher threshold, more people. Because it seemed to me that that would be rather easy for a small number of houses. Uh, you know, down a a street, a little lane near the. Um, water to. Fall into that threshold, form a corporation and, you know, build a marina. You know, so it seemed to me that that could could result in a lot of very small marinas. You know. So uh. I guess. I I I wonder from. Um, the staff's perspective, why you set it at fifty in this draft and. Um. You know. Whether you think that that would. Be the case. There's some obstacle to that?
So there there's no obstacle, that's that number is something that um you would be able to adjust uh. In in the draft here. The number fifty was selected because given the average household size on Mercer Island, you know, that's that's roughly like twenty or twenty-five families, and so. It would be. That's more than most of the uh. M- most of the like. The subdivisions that are near the shoreline are necessarily more homes than that, and so those homeowners associations are probably not big enough to qualify for that. Um, but certainly at fifty, if fifty people formed an LLC and had a place to build a marina and the money to build one. They they could apply for one.
Thank you. Okay, um, another question I had concerns dredging, uh, general requirements, a marina shall be designed and cited to provide the need for maintenance dredging. Um. In what what in our code is is um. Making it so that. Facilities that are built under this code would meet that standard of not needing to be dredged for the life of the development.
That that provision would be, we would review it at the time of application to make sure that it was designed to meet that standard. Uh, thereby establish that, actually, there isn't, there isn't another piece of the code.
Okay, well, there there's some technical considerations that I I don't need to know, I guess. Okay, that's just something you can design into it. Uh, here. Hmm, okay. Other things here, questions? Okay, so under the lighting standard. Um, when you say emergency lighting required for public safety. Um. Who decides what is a public safety need? Is that considered to be? Uh, an incident or? Just like we're scared and we want to have bright light shining in all directions?
Um, I mean, if it were a permanent installment, it would be included in their plan for development. Uh, and we would view it at that time whether or not it qualified for that standard. If it, this also would allow that for if there was like a search and rescue and they haven't put up a temporary light pole. Um, you know, that would not be in code, uh, that would not conflict with that um. That provision there.
Okay, my last question is. Um, we're talking about floats in the very last. Part of the ordinance here. What's a float? I can't find a definition of a float in the code.
Um, the floats are the piece underneath the dock that uh raise raise the dock and it floats upon.
Okay, so um. Okay. Thank you. My questions.
Okay, um, before uh asking for uh a motion, are there any other questions from the group? Okay, um. We have a couple of options. Does anybody have a motion that they would like to? Offer up? Commissioner Rigam?
Is a. A question, is this the appropriate time to propose the amendment?
Um, we would need a motion first to actually approve the draft regulations, and then we can amend. The the regulations at that point.
Okay, um, I I can propose that motion then, uh, propose, uh, submit a motion to propose, to approve the draft amendments.
Second.
All right. I will uh uh restate just for the record, Commissioner Rigab uh recommends is making a motion to adopt the draft regulations as provided in attachment A. Is that correct, Commissioner?
Um, yes, and at the appropriate time, I'd like to.
I'll get to you. Don't worry. Uh, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna give the second Vice Chair Murphy, because I heard his voice first, although it was a close uh race from everybody, so. Uh. I got that, okay. Uh, with that, um, I will open it up for discussion, deliberation, and amendments, should there be any? Commissioner Rigab, and then I'll come to you, Commissioner Acuse.
I would like to uh propose an amendment um to. The draft code or the draft regulations L. Um, it would be amendment number seven, and it would read. Marinas are only allowed if they are located at a site where an existing marina was present on January first of twenty twenty-three. Um. I believe that. Limits that would limit. The potential for new development and force, you know, more thought to go into that. And in response to Commissioner Acuse's concern.
Commissioner, let me let me get a second uh to that first, and then we'll get into discussion and deliberation. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second it.
Okay, so um.
Here, Hubble, if I could. My apologies.
I was gonna restate it for you.
Perfect, you go right ahead.
Uh, the emotion restated uh will be to add um. Section L six, I believe, is that, no? Uh, we'll have to determine where were you saying item number seven? Uh, an item L seven, I believe, is what your intent was, correct, Commissioner? Stating that uh. To the essence. That new marinas shall only be located. Where marinas that existed on January first.
Now only be located, I'm sorry.
Only be located. Where existing marinas. On January one. Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty-one or one?
One.
I heard you say twenty-one.
Oh, sorry. Uh. Previous to that date, and I'm sure there's gonna be comment from staff about some of. Pieces of that, but that was how it was stated. It was seconded by uh Carolyn, and then from there I'll get clarifications from Adam and the staff first on.
Okay, so just to ensure we're all on the same page. Uh. Motion by Reagan, seconded by Boatsman to add an amendment stating. To add a new item L seven, sorry, I still have X uh bad minutes, to add a new item L seven stating new marina shall only be located where existing marinas were on January one, twenty twenty-three.
I think that's good enough for the. Description of what we're getting to, although that the finessing of that language may need to occur. Um. Adam?
Yes, so I I would recommend that you amend the final, the date. That that uh existing as of that date. To the effective date of this ordinance. Um. That's a much cleaner and just kind of better way of of getting at existing. Um, that that's really my only comment on that. I think um. The legal review would would take a look at the legality of that prior to adoption.
Uh.
As it goes to the council, I should clarify, legal review looks at it when it goes to the council.
Uh, Commissioner Rigab, would you be uh okay with that uh friendly amendment there?
Yes, yeah, that. Yeah, I I'll defer to Adam's expertise.
And is the secondary also okay with that? Great, so. We will go ahead and make that change, Deb. Great, so uh with that, um, do you uh, Commissioner, want to speak to your amendment, and then we'll go to any other questions and comments?
Sure, I'll I'll make it real brief. Um, I think, yeah, like it it. It provides what we were asked to do. Um, it provides a path for using a scup for redevelopment and only redevelopment of existing marinas does not open the door to. A highly unlikely but still possible. New development of a marina. And in response to Commissioner Acuse's concerns, um, you know, I think if any group were able to pull together the money. Necessary to build a new marina. I I I would think that monetary bar is higher than perhaps purchasing an existing marina and opening it up to the public. So I don't see this as. Preventing that, I see this as. Yeah, not not opening the door for more developments on the shoreline.
Uh, great, Commissioner Acuse.
I had my hand up for a a different amendment, but I'll go ahead and just speak to this. Um. I I. I'm opposed to the amendment, um. I don't, I just don't think it's uh. Really. Fair. Generally. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, uh, Vice Chair Murphy.
Yeah, um, I share Adam's concern um. Conceptually, uh, that we have gone further than the original. Goal or plan. Um, but I think um. Kate's correct that there is a fairness issue here, and there's also just a. Uh, really unlikely. Um, the other thing I'm concerned about is that. Just adding that. Without going through the rest of it and figuring out. Does that make any difference? Um. Could be problematic. Um. You know, and and could create unintended consequences. Yeah, and one final comment is. I'm a little concerned about the wording of it, uh, in the sense of saying you can only have it where we have existing marinas. Could that language be used to say, uh, for example, if the beach club needs to go out a few more feet? Uh, based on his plan, would that language prohibit that? Because I don't think that's what Adam is intending. But I think we'd have to be very careful with that language if we're to adopt something along those lines.
Hey, Commissioner Boatsman?
I've had the same concern as Adam throughout this process that. Uh, a docket item to, you know, rebuild and improve one particular facility has resulted in. An ordinance to allow uh marinas now. Based on in several different. Circumstances. And I I just don't think that. It's a big change for Mercer Island, you know. Um, it's a pretty quiet place generally. And um. I just don't think that the public is aware. That this um such a significant change is being proposed couched in this docket item. I I just don't feel um quite comfortable with. You know, the. The the level of change we're looking at. Personally, I'm not concerned about whether the city were to own a marina. Or um. That. Or or even a commercial marina, because there there really isn't any land available that I can think of that's. You know, would be used for a commercial marina. Um. But um I am concerned about. The group of homeowners that get together and, you know, maybe some smaller marinas spouting up here and there. It's a pretty big change. I'd rather put that off for another time if there's public demand for it. Or when there's public demand for it.
Okay, um. Uh, uh, and Kate, I know your hand is up for an additional amendment, and we'll get there once we get this done. Um, any other? Comments, Commissioner Curry, Commissioner Rishi, anything on this amendment? No is an acceptable answer.
No.
No, I have no question.
Um, so I'll I'll just add my uh final thoughts uh on on. Um, so, I'll, I'll just add my, uh, final thoughts, uh, on, on the amendment. Um, and, and staff can correct me if, if I'm uh, not understanding this correctly, but I think the, the the, the reality is actually the opposite of what you're suggesting, Carolyn, which is, um, this code is not actually adding or enabling more marinas that already exists in our code, like the, the substantive change here is actually the restriction of new marinas. Um, I'm, I'm not aware of that restriction existing today. So, nothing from what I understand in the draft regulation updates is actually adding any additional ability for uh, marinas to exist, certainly it's changing some of the process and, um, some of the details that surround that. But I'm not sure we're like opening a Pandora's box, uh, by um, by doing that, um, and along the lines of, of Kate's thoughts here. You know, when we're in land use planning, we should in fact be thinking about you know, the, the entirety of if this thing should be allowed or not. What does it look like, less about, um, you know, at least in this part of the code, getting into, um, you know, the locations of where said items might um, be allowed, that's where I would turn to things like zoning and, and actual land use maps to determine how and where things are are allowed within something, these are just the, in my mind, the procedural, uh, definitions of if they are allowed, how then they are represented when they're built. Um, and to the comment, I forget who made it, um, I think it was Commissioner Murphy. I know in Newcastle, we went through a similar exercise with drive-throughs, and the way that we handled the situation there was specifying a number, so we did a count of the number of existing drive-throughs, and we said that there shall be no more than that number of them existing, so that if a building burnt down, there could be one put somewhere else, or the building was replaced, and so in the case of this, you, you could approach it, and I'd be much more inclined to say that if the group was going in that direction of actually restricting, I would not say where the existing marinas exist, but I would say we figure out what the number is, and we would say there shall be no more than X number of marinas allowed on the shoreline, and you do know more than that to specify it, because you know, we have had substantial fires, if you think of the Culkins Hotel years ago, possibly they could have had a marina as a part of their commercial establishment, and um, that was a hundred years ago, and something similar like that could happen down the road, I know those are hypotheticals, but um, there's a way to restrict things without overly restricting them, so if the group is moving in that direction, I would certainly encourage us to think of that as the qualifier, so. Uh, with that, um, Carolyn, I saw you raise your hand, I'll give you one more, um, uh, rebuttal on that, uh.
I think, I think Kate had her hand up before I did.
I think she's still waiting to make, uh, another motion.
Okay, all right, well, um, I guess I'm, I'm real puzzled by what, what, um, about the idea that we that marinas are already allowed, and that this is not a big change, I, I understood that marinas were not allowed, new marinas. And that's why we're doing this, because the level of change that say a beach club wants to make constitutes a new marina. So, Adam, uh, are we allowing, are, are we allowed, are, are new, are new marinas allowed right now, and this is no change?
No, you, you have it right, so, under the existing code, a new marina would not be allowed, it's a prohibited, um, use. The, and the reason this docket proposal was before was to change that to allow that kind of construction.
Okay, and in regards to we're not deliberating on where things can go, I, I guess I feel that uh, we are deliberating on that, because, you know, we have existing zoning, and we know where these type of uh, for facilities could go, so, I mean, you know, uh, I think, I think we're making a substantial decision, it's not just a decision that's sort of out there and sort of nebulous. It, it has real applicability to, to existing places.
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll follow with my questions with staff on, on, on that, I have, I, I think that's a I think the answer you gave Adam is a technical answer, and you're not wrong, but I also do think that it is incorrect in that there's actually just inconsistency in the code that's preventing this from technically occurring, but it's not necessarily the intent of the existing code, which is the point I was trying to make. So, um, okay, uh, with the amendment that's currently on the table, um, uh, which I believe, uh, uh, Madam Deputy City Clerk, if, if you wouldn't mind reiterating what you have on the record, and then we'll make sure to take a vote from there.
I have, I have the main motion, which was to approve the draft amendments, it's outlined in attachment A, and then I have an amendment to that. Which is to amend the motion to add a new item L seven stating that new marinas shall only be located where there are existing marinas on the effective date of this ordinance.
Okay. Um, all right, uh, is that a question, Carolyn?
Yeah, I, I'm a little confused about our process here now, are we just voting on this one amendment, and then other amendments can be brought?
Yeah, I'm getting to that, yes, yeah. So, um, yeah, so, um, we will go ahead and make, uh, we will take a vote, and I'll have the Deputy City Clerk, uh, take a, a roll call vote here. We are, um, voting on the amendment, uh, as it was, uh, presented, which is limiting the marinas, um, based on the effective date of the, uh, ordinance, or whatever, whatever the language is.
Okay, new marinas shall only be located where there are existing marinas on the effective date of this ordinance.
Perfect, uh, so with that, um, let's go ahead and call a vote on the amendment.
Vice Chair Murphy?
No.
Bear with me here, Commissioner Accuse?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
No. Uh, Commissioner, excuse me, Chair Hubble?
No.
Commissioner Boatsman?
Hi.
Commissioner Curry?
Hi.
Commissioner Rishi?
Hi.
And who else do I have remaining, uh, Chair Hubble?
Uh, you got me, it's.
Commissioner Reagan.
Hi.
Mister Chair, we have four and support and three against.
Uh, very good. The, uh, amendment then has passed, uh, by a vote of four to three. Um, and Adam, I will, uh, uh, I will give a little grace, I know we specified item L seven, but, uh, uh, if you can just ensure that structurally, it's actually in, in the right place there, um, when that, uh, comes in. Um, okay, uh, with that, um, any general discussion of the proposed, uh, ordinances? Or I know that there is a, uh, Commissioner Accuse, I believe, has another amendment to propose.
I might need help with staff on wording of this, but, um, I wanted to add the definition of functional grading. And the, um, definition of that and how it's calculated, or just wholly reference, um, the WAC in terms of standards and requirements, so that all of the definitions like functional grading float, all of these things that we've been asking about tonight, that are already defined in the WAC are very clear to people. Do you think your amendment already does that, Adam? I guess that's more of a question. Cause if it doesn't do that, I think it should.
Okay, so, the, the amendment that we, that I talked about earlier wouldn't specifically call out WACs, uh, or, or CWs. In, in general, as a, uh, as a practice, I try, I personally try to avoid establishing those links unless they're absolutely necessary. Because as the WAC changes, then your code, then it can be, it can be a problem in your code. Uh, so, in, in that regard, I think maybe the cause the, the purpose of adding these, as I understand it, is to communicate better with the public, right?
Yeah, and maybe there's a, maybe instead it's a amendment for a number, what was, Adams was number seven, maybe it's number eight, that staff will develop a guidance document.
Mm-hmm, and, and that could be, if, that doesn't necessarily need to go in the code, so that could be part of your, your recommendation. And that would go to the council, they can direct us to make those materials, but it doesn't need to be established.
Okay, um, then I'm done and don't need to propose an amendment, thank you, Chair Hubble.
Okay. Um, Commissioner or Vice Chair Murphy?
Yeah, I'd like to, I, I'm not sure with, with Kate dropping that, uh, it's not clear where we're at with the amendment for the grading. Um, so, so.
There has not been anything proposed, so.
Yes, so I would propose an amendment to section L six uh, and to delete subsections four and five, and replace them with subsection three that ties the grading requirements to the, um, state law, state and federal law, as Adam articulated much better earlier.
I'll second that.
Second. Okay, um, I will, uh, the motion's been moved by Vice Chair Murphy, seconded by Commissioner Boatsman, and, um, uh, uh, Deb, I will have Adam read the language that he had proposed earlier, so that we all are speaking directly to the specific language, if you wouldn't mind, Adam?
Yes, it would be overwater structures must be graded in compliance with state and federal law.
Great. Um, so the amendment is to strike items, uh, four and five from L six A and replace them with an item three per the language that Adam just provided. Um, any, uh, I know we've spoken about it a few times, uh, Vice Chair, do you wanna say anything additional beyond making the amendment?
I think we covered it.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Boatsman, do you have a question or comment about this before?
Oh, no, sorry, I put that, uh, down there, okay?
Okay. Um, anyone else have any questions or comments on this amendment before we take a vote? Okay, hearing none, uh, Deb, would you like to call the roll for us, please? Oh, you're on mute.
Vice Chair Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, Chair Hubble?
Yes.
Commissioner Rishi?
Hi.
Commissioner Curry?
Hi.
Commissioner Accuse?
Hi.
Commissioner Boatsman?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rigab?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, it sounds like the amendment passes, uh, seven two zero. Uh, Commissioner Boatsman, you had your hand up, did you have another amendment?
Well, yes.
Or other comments?
It's not, it's a, it's a potential amendment, but it's kind of, um, confused now by the adoption of the First Amendment, which limited the new ones to where existing marinas are. So if we look at L two, talking about where marinas are allowed, does the amendment, does Adam's amendment change this? Mister Zach?
Um, so it doesn't, it, it doesn't change that, but what it does say, what it does end up doing is any, maybe, marinas would only be allowed on sites with existing facilities. Uh, and existing as of the effective date, so.
And they would still have to comply with the requirements in item two.
Correct, yes, thank you.
Uh-huh. Okay, um, I think that under the circumstances, uh, setting the limit at fifty people um, well, either way, I think fifty people is not enough people, but, um, if you take this considered by household, that's, that's a very fluid uh, measure, we can't tell how many people there are by how many people live in a house. So, um, let's say a, a bunch of households, homeowners decided to get together to propose a marina. But I guess that's not happening, because they're only allowed where existing ones are, so I'm just thoroughly confused, I don't see how B has a relevance anymore, does it?
Should one of the clubs at some point in time be turned into a residential establishment and no longer serve fifty people? That would no longer be able to rebuild a marina, that would be the, the consequence there.
Mm-hmm, I see. Okay, I'm gonna just let that slide, uh, I, I really don't know what to do with that, so don't have, I don't have an amendment for that.
Okay. Um, all right, well, we are, um, at the main motion, uh, back to discussion about that. Any general, um, discussion to the main motion, or any additional uh, amendments that folks would like to propose? Carolyn, back to you.
I have one, yeah, um, okay, regarding, uh, this is L four L, L four L, talking about how soon plantings have to occur. So, what I'm concerned about is that we have bare soil exposed for too long. And I have a question for staff about this in order to figure out how to word my motion. Now, in other developments, such as building houses and so on, um, there are measures taken to prevent erosion. But in this case, we have, um, the way it's drafted, you know, bare soil next to wave action could be left bare for an undeterminate indeterminate, uh, period of time, sometimes, you know, new development takes, you know, a year or more to complete or two. Um, so, I, I think there's some danger here in the way it's been changed to say that herbaceous plantings must occur prior to final approval of the permit. Um, so, um, is there anything from other development, regular development, Adam, that guides us here?
Sure, thank, thanks for asking, so a, any new development has to manage its stormwater runoff it, during the construction process, that's, that's part of the conditioning of a building permit. Uh, we require those stormwater, um, management measures with, with all permitted activity, so, a marina would be no different. The, this L four L is about when the planning must be completed as part of that overall development, not necessarily affecting the stormwater management that would need to be done during the, to protect from the runoff, uh, during the de- development. So it's really only, um, requiring that you have to have all of your landscaping planted prior to the completion of your building permit, it doesn't touch on stormwater, really.
Mm-hmm, okay, I guess I'm not really thinking stormwater either, I'm just thinking about the proximity of bare ground next to a water body. Um, just give me a moment here, and I'll, I'll word my, my, um, amendment based on what I've heard here.
Well, um, Carolyn is form, uh, formulating that, are there any other, uh, comments or questions that we should, uh, entertain, well?
Can we take a five-minute break?
Sure, oh, yeah, it is almost eight o'clock.
Carolyn, uh, works on that?
Yes.
Wait, I have to go.
Is this, is this the last item, though? Sorry.
Yes.
This is the last item, I'd rather power through.
I have another one, at least one, so.
Vice Chair Murphy, are you asking for a bio break?
Yes, Kate doesn't have a sixty-seven year old bladder.
Well, let's do this, Carolyn, why don't you, instead of rushing, take.
Plenty of information.
We'll make this, we'll make this short. It is currently seven fifty-four. Uh, let's take a recess for six minutes and we'll come back at the, uh, top of the hour. Thank you. All right, we will give Victor one more minute. There he is. All right, uh, let's go back, uh, Carolyn, do you have, uh, something to present to the group?
Yes, I do, um. If I could direct everyone to look at, uh. L four L. That's the, the, the section I'm proposing an amendment. If you, do you guys have that in front of you? If you look at that, I'm proposing to, if you go to line four. I'm proposing to actually move that sentence, but not delete it. And then, um, the amendment that I'm going to propose would delete the first five words of the next. The next line. So here's how it would read, my amendment. L would read. Disturbance of bank vegetation shall be limited to the minimum amount necessary to accomplish the project. Disturbed bank vegetation shall be replaced with native, locally adapted herbaceous and woody. Vegetation, comma, planted in the fall or early winter, whichever occurs first. Herbaceous plantings must occur prior to final approval of the building permit. The applicant shall take appropriate measures to ensure re- revegetation success.
Would it be helpful if I put that on the screen?
That would be helpful.
Yes.
You want to put the old one up there and, you know, we can show the strikeout underline or?
You, you will see that when I share my screen. It'll all be right there.
Oh, good, thank you.
Okay, one moment, please.
You either type really fast or she sent this to you, Deb.
No, it actually helped that I had it open.
Couldn't happen.
So you should be looking at. The screen here with the changes.
Oh, there's one thing, Deb, here that's, that's missing. Uh, line four, you need to delete it because you've added it down below. You see?
Yes, I see that. Thank you. I cut and paste it and then, yep.
Okay. And, and the purpose of my amendment, well, actually, I don't need to explain that right now, but anyway, that's my proposal.
Can everyone see what I am looking at here with the changes?
Um, yeah, so, um, before you go, um, Carolyn, there's, uh, an amendment on the table. To, uh, change the wording of item six four L. Um, as, uh, uh, proposed on the screen, is there a second to this amendment?
Seconded.
Okay, it's been, uh, moved by Commissioner Boatsman, seconded by Commissioner Rigob. Um, okay, Carolyn, do you want to, uh, 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 describe how this is different than what was there before?
Sure, um. I was trying to get at planting the herbaceous plantings as soon as possible also. Uh, and that typically is early fall or winter. Um, so I, I just didn't think it made much sense to leave the herbaceous plantings. Uh, you know, possibly cycling through a suitable planting period of fall and winter. So, um, this way I've proposed it, um. Both the herbaceous planting and the woody planting would be planted in the next suitable planting cycle. But it keeps that same provision that's saying that the herbaceous plantings must occur prior to the final approval of the building permit. Because I know sometimes the woody, Adam, maybe Adam Zach, you could tell me, but I think sometimes woody plantings have to wait. You might even approve the building permit and come back later and they're a little more sensitive to, uh, when they're planted. So anyway.
Okay.
That's my reasoning.
Um, Commissioner Rigob, do you have a question?
Uh, just a minor clarification, um, and perhaps I heard incorrectly, um, cause what I'm seeing typed has. And herbaceous and or woody, and I thought I heard herbaceous or woody verbally, um. I just wanted to hear a clarification.
I did mean and or just as, uh, the same, well, the same way it was said.
Okay. As presented, as, as typed, okay.
Let me, let me just look at it. Maybe I'm forgetting something here. Yeah, yeah, I think, I think it's, I think it's correct the way it's up there.
Okay, uh, any? Comments, uh? Questions beyond what has been. Provided, Commissioner Akus?
Yeah, I guess my only comment or question, I don't know, should it, uh, would be. That before this is adopted, I feel like staff would have to make sure that the language is consistent with our, um. With the surface water design manual, I think you all follow the surface water design manual. So to me, because I'm familiar with that document, this feels fairly redundant to that manual, um. And not that it's not worth saying, just so folks know. Um, but I think we do need to have staff make sure that it's consistent with that. The statements in that manual. I'm also slightly confused by planted in the fall or early winter, whichever occurs first.
Could I, could I respond to that?
I suppose if you play, if that project happened in fall, then early winter could come first.
Yeah. I think that's just being mentioned as, those are the good planting times. You know, fall and early winter.
It's the, it's the whichever occurs first that, uh, had me confused because I'm like, well, typically fall does come before.
I think if you were to.
Whichever occurs first is useful because the sooner you get it in the ground. In the appropriate planting period, the more likely it's going to survive the spring and summer, so. And that's more, more now than ever. Things are just dying, you know.
My, uh, uh, interpretation there, um, Kate is, if you said in. The fall or early winter and you were building in the summer, you could say, well, we're going to plant in the winter, we're not going to plant in the fall. Cause it's an or statement versus the, you know, to Carolyn's point, you know, was essentially as soon as possible within that window. That, that's the way I would read that. Um, Adam, d- does this substantively? Uh, there's a part of me that says that these, this is now in conflict with itself because you're saying that you have to plant. I- as early as possible in the fall or winter and it has to happen. Before the building permit, I mean, I guess maybe they're not necessarily in conflict, but, um. Uh, it would mean that you would not be able to have final approval until the winter, if you finished construction in the summer. Um, so, uh, just your thoughts on whether this creates a conflict or not?
Yeah, I don't believe, I mean, this is my, my first time looking at this too, but I don't think that would create a conflict. What might make it. Slightly better is if we dropped herbaceous off of that last sentence or the blue sentence there and just had to be plantings must occur. The herbaceous part, I think it's less important than having the plantings occur prior to finally, uh, approval of the building permit. But that's, I, I think functionally we'll, we'll get there either way, and as. Commissioner Akus pointed out too, you know, there's, there's more review that's associated with this and we would need to just double check that. As amended that squared with our stormwater. Surface water.
Um, Deputy CPD Director, uh, Nelson Van Gorb, do you have a question? I see you came on video.
I just am a little concerned that. With this order, it could mean that a project cannot receive final approval. Until that fall or winter period has passed because it seems to say that you can't do the planting. Oh, you can't do any planting. For removing herbaceous here especially. You can't do any planting outside of the fall or winter period, which would mean that. You know, if someone builds a dock in July, they wouldn't be able to receive final approval for that dock until like. The following fall or winter when they finish their planting. Um, I don't know if that's a problem. It will definitely hold up, you know, it'll extend the timeline for when projects can be approved.
Commissioner Rishi?
Follows up on, on what, um. Allison just said. Isn't the way it was originally written? Isn't that also, doesn't that also fall, doesn't that also have the same problem?
Sorry, the order was a little different. It said. Herbaceous plantings, so non-woody plantings must occur prior to final approval. But the woody vegetation needs to be planted in the fall, but it can be after final approval of the permit. And so what typically happens with this is permits will receive final approval. With a condition that those plantings are completed later. Sometimes there's a bond that's required to guarantee that the plantings actually occur. Um, and so this would remove our ability to use a bond to secure landscaping and. We would have to complete it before we could.
I don't thi- I don't think it said herbaceous. I'm looking at the original. I've, I've lost the thread a little bit here, but I'm looking at the original wording. It says disturbance of bank vegetation shall be limited to minimum amount. Necessary to accomplish project distributed, disturbed bank vegetation shall be replaced with native locally adapted herbaceous and or woody vegetation. Herbaceous plantings must occur, oh, I see, okay. So that's been there already. Herbaceous plantings must occur prior to the approval of the building permit.
Yeah, and, and woody vegetation was the only one that was subject to the early in fall and winter.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Boatsman?
Yeah, um, perhaps we should just delete that sentence, herbaceous plantings must occur prior to the final approval of the building permit. Because I think that CPD has a handle on situations where plantings have to occur after the approval of the building permit. So, um, you know, I kind of left it in there because it was there, but, um. I was just trying to get at the idea that herbaceous didn't have to be done, you know, at the next suitable planting cycle. And I think that's the main thing I'm trying to get to. So if my second is, uh, in agreement, I would strike that line.
Uh, I forget who seconded this.
It was Commissioner Rigob.
Okay, are you okay with that, uh, change to the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Vice Chair Murphy, you have a comment?
Yeah, I would just say with respect to this, that if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Uh, and I think we've spent a lot of time wordsmithing something that's not. Too critical and seem pretty clear already, so I would leave alone.
Okay. Um, all right.
Does that, does that need a second?
No, I'm gonna call to a vote and you can vote no as soon as we do that. Um, Carolyn, do you have anything new to add?
Yes, I would like to point out that there is, this is something that's changed. It's not, it's not as if it's just, you know, kind of fluff and there's no substance here. You know, in the previous version, there was no. Uh, hurry for covering, you know, bare soil at the lake's edge. There was no, there was no schedule by which herbaceous plants had to be put in, and that's what most of the plants are going to be. So I do think this is important and it is an improvement the way it is, and I don't think our time was wasted discussing this.
Uh, Vice Chair Murphy, you can have the last comment and then we're going to go to a vote.
Yeah, um. Carolyn's correct to be concerned about bank erosion. But those things are dealt with with the temporary erosion and sediment control plan. Uh, under the Surface Water Management Act. And so I think that trying to craft something for that problem here is not. Either necessary or appropriate.
Okay. All right, uh, with that, um, I think we've, um, heard, uh. Uh, sort of both sides of this, uh.
Care if I may? Just one point of clarification.
Yes.
Uh, it's my understanding based on Commissioner Bozeman and what was agreed to by Commissioner Regge is to go ahead and delete the herbaceous plantings must occur.
That is my understanding of the last, uh, agreement between the motion and the seconder.
This is where we stand. Uh, just this portion here that's been deleted. For a vote.
Great. Um, thank you for that clarification. So if everyone sees, uh, that on the screen. Um. Deputy City Clerk, if you wouldn't mind, uh, calling the roll.
Okay, um. Commissioner Regge?
Hi.
I'm going to use a different technique here. Uh, Commissioner Cuse?
Hi.
Commissioner Bozeman?
Hi.
Vice Chair Murphy?
No.
Commissioner Curry?
No.
Commissioner Rishis?
Nay.
I'm sorry, was that nay or yay?
Nay. No.
Thank you. And Chair Hubble?
No.
The amendment, uh, did not pass.
Uh, okay, it sounds like, uh, the motion was, uh, defeated three, two, four.
Four to three.
Uh, sorry, yes, I always do the, the yays in front of the nays, sorry. Um. Uh, so thank you, um, all right, are there any other? Uh, proposed amendments or general commentary? Um, on the main motion? Commissioner Bozeman?
I have another amendment to propose.
Great.
Okay, so let me see here, I can. Read this to you. Okay, this is to. Uh. M, the section on lighting. So. The amendment would read for. The first paragraph under M. Exterior lighting mounted on piers. I have this in a document. I could share it with you perhaps. If that's easier, I could just read it. It's not that long. What do you prefer, Deb?
If it's not very long, um, you can read it.
Okay, I'll just go ahead. Okay, exterior lighting mounted on piers, docks or other overwater components of a marina shall be at ground or dock level. Be directed away from adjacent properties and the water. This is the new part. Be of the lowest intensity needed. Comma. Avoid short wavelength blue violet light. And then the rest of that paragraph is the same.
Okay, so the motion is to add.
Not quite done. I'm, I'm not quite done.
Oh, sorry, you made it sound like you were done.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sure I made it sound that way, but there's another part to this also, and then you go down to number. Uh, s- small Roman numeral one. Um. I would amend that to. I propose to amend that to say temporary emergency lighting required for public safety incidents. And number five, I propose deleting seasonal decorative lighting. Okay, that's the end of my proposal.
Commissioner Bozeman, I'm going to ask you, I apologize everyone, but I'm going to have you repeat your original, uh, amendment to, uh, section M.
Sure.
Thank you.
Exterior lighting mounted on piers, docks or other overwater components of a marina. Shall be at ground or dock level. Be directed away from adjacent properties and the water. Here's the new part. Be of the lowest intensity needed. Comma. Avoid short wavelength blue violet light. Then the rest of this, the paragraph remains the same, Deb.
Okay, I believe, um. I have everything that you suggested. Once again, I can share my screen if that helps.
Sure, that would be great, thank you. Uh, and while, uh, the Deputy City Clerk is pulling that up, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it so we can discuss.
Okay, it has been seconded for discussion by Commissioner Regge. Um, seems pretty straightforward, Carolyn. Is there anything else you want to add to this?
Yeah, sure, um. You know, ever since the LED lighting revolution, you know, bright lighting is really cheap now. And so, you know, we're seeing a lot of lighting in our community that's. You know, might have a purpose, but it's probably brighter than it needs to be, or it's that horrible blue white light that just, you know, hurts your eyes. Um, so. I'm just adding a couple of things here that, um. Represent good lighting principles. Um, you know, you just make it as bright as you need and, and, um. And avoid that, that blue white light. Uh, the part about the temporary emergency lighting required for public safety incidents. I feel that the way it's worded now is kind of vague. So right now we have, you know, a lot of people feel like, you know. We need emergency lighting for public safety because. Public safety is a big concern. So I just wanted to clarify. That this, um, exemption was not for putting up. A lot of lighting just representing a general sense of safety concern. That this type of exemption was for. You know, situations where you need to have some emergency lighting. That's what should be exempt, not just, you know, a, a, a hunch that maybe more lighting is, is safer. And then the reason I proposed to delete the seasonal decorative lighting. Is that we're talking about lighting that's on. Overwater structures and, you know, these are places where we have endangered wildlife living below those structures. Um, so, you know, there's every opportunity to put. Uh, seasonal lighting up on, you know, the clubhouse and all that kind of stuff, but. I would recommend that it not be down on the docks, for one thing. Another thing is that the word seasonal means a lot of things to a lot of different people. Some people would think seasonal means let, let's put the lighting out there in the winter because this is the winter season and we want to cheer everybody up. Um. Also. Um. And, you know, and some people think that that is, is just, just holidays. But then how far around the holidays, many, many weeks or just a short duration? So, you know, I, I, I think it's best not, a- and also seasonal lighting can be extremely bright. I mean, people are using some very bright lighting there, so. I suggest we protect the fish. Uh, and, you know, just figure there's plenty of opportunities for decorative lighting. Um, on the, the, the buildings and the clubhouse.
Okay, uh, Vice Chair Murphy?
Um. You know, I think that the, um. First insert is, is good. I'm concerned about the. Modification of the temporary or the emergency lighting because. I think that's a reference to. Lighting that would come on in an emergency, not, not if they all of a sudden rolled in with. Big Klieg lights if in the event there was, you know. A missing person off the, off the beach club or off of another marina. So I think that temporary. Uh, and incidents should be eliminated there. Um. And, you know, I don't know about the seasonal decorative lighting, but. It seems a little bit Scrooge-like to, to drop that, but, you know, um. I, I think. I don't know if any of these places ever put up huge bright. Uh, lights for Fourth of July or Christmas or any other holiday, so. It seems like deleting that is. Probably unnecessary and as I said, seems kind of Scrooge-like to me.
Uh, Commissioner Rishish?
Uh, so just a quick response to Vice Chair Murphy on, on the, on the holiday lights. I think at least in the case of the beach club, I'm not sure about the shore club and the. In Covenant Shores, I do believe that they. They do, uh, host the Christmas ships that go around the lake and I don't know whether they decorate docks for that. Um, my question is more for the staff. And the language that says avoid short wavelength blue light. Do we have clarity on what avoiding means? Does that mean we don't use it? What, what does it mean to avoid it?
That's a good question. I think the standard is, um. Not necessarily like hard and fast, um. And I mean, that's part of, part of the conditional use permit process is accounting for that kind of gray area. But I think the standard is difficult to interpret.
Yeah, thanks.
Commissioner Cuse?
Yeah, I like the, I like the edit to M. Um, although I, uh, sure Victor's concerned about the word avoid. Um, I wonder if there isn't a way to. Um. Pop in the word WDFW best available science on lighting or something so that we have a reference to. Whatever the latest and greatest is, um. It's, it's a little bit on the fly for me, um, but I think I definitely like be of the lowest intensity needed, um. I'm also concerned about the temporary incidents. Um, I understand. Why it's there and I agree in theory. However, I don't know that we're equipped right now, at least I'm not equipped right now to have a conversation about, um. What constitutes emergency lighting and when it can be turned on and when it's not turned on. Um, I think I, I agree with Carolyn, that's definitely potential for abuse there, um, that we don't want to happen. Um, but I also don't think. We have had or are poised to have right now a conversation about what that actually means. So for that reason, I'd want to not include that edit. Um, and then for seasonal decorative lighting, um, I'm of two minds about this. I agree it sounds. Good to like to cut it, but I also agree, um. Some of it is really, really bad for fish and if, um. I- if I had my way to like try to find a middle ground there, I would say seasonal decorative lighting, um. That is outside of the thirty feet of the shoreline. Or something like that, so that we're getting away from that, um. That juvenile salmon zone. So I don't know if that would be acceptable to you, uh, Commissioner Bozeman or not, but if we could call that. Seasonal decorate lighting outside of thirty feet of ordinary high water, I could get behind keeping. Or that might be middle ground.
Could I ask you, um, for clarification? You said outside of thirty feet, are you talking about the lighting would not be allowed? Um. Waterward from the ordinary high watermark or?
Yeah, I would say waterward, like a, a thirty foot zone on either side.
Uh huh.
Um, no, I guess it would be waterward and maybe you could make it a shorter zone landward, but something where it's like. You can't put seasonal decorative lighting. In the, in the. Juvenile salmon migration zone, so, and typically WFW is called that within thirty feet of O eight, ordinary high.
Okay, so this particular paragraph is simply about lighting that's mounted on piers and docks and overwater components. But you're talking about perhaps. Moving that restriction thirty feet back from the shore.
Yeah, so for example, they have a dock that's a hundred and five feet long. I don't see a huge problem with putting lighting out, you know, eighty to a hundred feet if they wanted to decorate the end of the dock. I don't think that would have a huge impact on juvenile salmonids and then you're, you know, it takes a little of the Scrooginess out of it.
So then you can, but you don't put the lights between that and the shore.
Yeah.
That what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm saying you keep that thirty feet from shoreline free of lighting.
That, that might be too, too complicated. I, uh, it's my first.
It could be, but it gives them, it gives them an option is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, if we just restricted to what they're talking about, you know, exterior mounted on piers, docks and overwater components, um. I think we would be getting. You know, a whole lot of the potential problems solved by just not having seasonal lighting out there in the first place. But, you know, I'm flexible.
Uh, was that all you had, uh, Kate? Uh, Commissioner Regge?
Um, I, I would support the lowest intensity, um. I would, I'm not supportive of the avoid short wavelength blue light just because it's, it is too nebulous, both avoid and. You know, what, what are those exact wavelengths? Um, is that going to limit them to? Of one or two solutions only? Um, so yeah, I like lowest intensity needed and. Um, yeah, that's the, that's the, that's the part I, I like. Others, I'm not, not convinced on.
Okay. Uh, any other, uh, comments before we go to a, a vote, uh, on this? Carolyn is.
Yeah, I'd like to just a couple of things.
Sorry, I just want to make sure everyone else has had a chance since you've spoken a couple of times on this.
Hands up.
Sorry, Commissioner Curry or, or Victor, we haven't heard from you, so I just want to make sure I'm being aware, nothing?
Um, I would have one thing, I'm sorry, Victor, you're saying something.
We're just gonna say for me and I'm, I'm, I have nothing, okay?
I would just ask, does this tie into anything further that staff would have to go and evaluate? Uh, for potential conflicts? Or is it just kind of standalone in this document here?
Um, this would just apply to the marina, so it would only affect what we're looking at here.
Okay, uh, Carolyn, one, I'll let you have one last comment and then we're going to go to a vote.
I wanted to, uh, suggest and to also to Adam who seconded this, I think. Um, we should probably change that word, uh, avoid short wave length blue light to minimize. And if people are conserve, concerned about. The definition, you know, of short wave length blue light, that's, that's a well-understood concept in the lighting industry and. It, uh, I, I don't think that's, I don't think that's vague really, so, um.
So you're changing your, uh, motion from the word avoid to minimize?
Right, is that okay, Adam?
Okay, the motioner and the seconder are both in. Uh, agreeance on that? Okay.
And I would suggest maybe dividing the vote into three pieces because we seem to have people that are in favor of part of it, but not the other part and so on and so forth.
Well, it was presented as one motion, so we have to vote on it in that way and should it, um, either pass or not pass, folks can make additional motions if they, uh. Uh, desire, but as, as presented, it's, uh. Uh, a single motion, so with that Deputy City Clerk, would you like to, uh, call the roll on the? Um, amendment as presented in front. amendment as presented in front of us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Cuse?
No.
Commissioner Boatsman?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
No.
Commissioner Regan?
No.
Chair Hubble?
No.
Vice Chair Murphy?
No.
And Commissioner Rishis? Thank you.
Okay, the motion fails six to one. And then I saw I've seen hands going up and down, so I don't know who was first. I I see Commissioner Cuse here at the top of the screen.
Hi, I would like to propose a motion, but Deb, if you could leave that up on the screen so it's easy to edit, that would be great.
Then do this if that would be easier or?
No, keep that there. On the third sentence, I would propose to delete the suggested addition minimize short wavelength blue light. I think taking the word temporary off item one below. And that way we're saying it's for incidental use. I want to keep that word because I think it's important. And see for seasonal decorative lighting. Can you undelete that? And add I don't know how to say this exactly succinctly, but maybe
Beyond 30 feet of the high watermark?
Beyond 30 feet of the ordinary high watermark. Thank you.
I I knew where you were going.
High watermark? Ordinary high watermark, yeah. Thank you. That's all I have for that proposed motion.
Okay, so there's been amendment proposed as presented on the screen. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
I'll give the second to Commissioner Boatsman on that. Kate, you want to make any commentary on this? It's pretty self explanatory, but.
I think it's pretty self explanatory. I'm gonna leave it at that.
Great. Vice Chair Murphy?
Yeah, I have a question for Kate. The change on small i emergency lighting required for public safety incidents. Does that mean that they couldn't have emergency lighting installed? Or that they only use it in an emergency?
Yeah, I think in most cases, I think you would want that emergency lighting installed or part of your system, but you would only use it incidentally. Like the temporary word, I think, might be problematic for public safety because when I think about I do swift water rescue training with a marine dive rescue unit. And when you have an incident, you have an incident and you need that lighting right away. You're not going to go install it. So I think I think it's important to put incident there. So the expectation isn't that people are using it year round on a fear on a fear factor as opposed to an actual emergency and emergencies are defined in code as temporary or imminent threat.
Right.
Commissioner Boatsman?
Yeah, um. I have some questions about five. These are these are some good improvements, Kate. Thank you. I have a question about five. I wonder if the word, would you be willing to change the word seasonal to holiday decorative lighting? Instead of seasonal because seasonal is pretty vague.
I I have a hard time with holiday just because it means holy day and we've got separation of church and state. So I prefer to keep seasonal. But I'm open to that if others think it would be more appropriate if there's a general consensus that it's more appropriate.
I think the word holiday is is a very generic term in our in our in our language. Yeah, there's a lot of words that have religious origins that we all use all the time, but but so I I think so I would propose that amendment. How do we do that, Dan? Suggesting amendment?
So so this is where we get into the complexities of nested amendments. So you can actually make a motion to amend the amendment. And then we could vote on your specific change and then we would vote on the amendment as a whole.
Okay.
So.
Hold on one second while I ask a question about the 30 foot thing. I'm still confused as to what that means. So you're okay with putting lights way out in the water, but not close to the shore? Is that what that means?
Yeah, because the shoreline lining is really specifically meant to protect juvenile salmonids from predation by bass and other things that are in deeper water.
Is 30 feet going to do it? Is that far enough?
What the state requires for lots of other things. So I think sticking with a a standard is good.
Because I think I mean, this is this is bright light. It's not, you know, maybe some of those other standards don't have to do with bright light. So if you think that will do it, you know, leave it alone, but so, okay, I would recommend I would propose an amendment to the amendment to say holiday instead of seasonal.
Okay, is there a second to that amendment? I'll ask one more time. Is there a second for that amend proposed amendment? Hearing no second, the proposed motion fails. With that, we will go back to the motion on the table, which is the amendment as presented in in front of us on the screen with the four items in blue text. Are there any further comments or questions for this before we call for a vote? Okay, hearing none. Deputy City Clerk, if you'd like to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Rishis? I heard no.
Yes, yes, that was a no.
Thank you. Commissioner Boatsman?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
No.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Cuse?
Yes.
Vice Chair Murphy?
Yes.
And Chair Hubble?
No.
And my count, if you can confirm, would be the motion passes four to three.
That's correct.
Great. Great. So we have that amendment has been approved. We'll go back to the main motion. Are there any other comments or discussion related to the main motion or any further amendments to be proposed? Carolyn, you have one more?
Yes. I propose that a definition for floats be added to the city code.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Calling one more time, there's a motion on the floor to add floats. Definition of floats to the city code. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, hearing none. The proposed motion fails. All right, any other general commentary or amendments? And if I hear none, we will move to a vote of the main motion, which is approval of where did my thing go? It is.
Are you? Do you want me to read it?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind and just summarize the the amendments that were added.
Okay.
If possible.
Let's try. Okay, so the main motion was made by Commissioner Regan and seconded by Commissioner Murphy to approve the draft amendments as outlined in attachment A. The motions to amend that were approved were to add a new item L seven stating new marinas shall only be located where there are existing marinas on the effective date of this ordinance that was approved for three. The next motion that was approved was made by Commissioner Murphy and seconded by Commissioner Boatsman to amend L six A deleting subsections L six A four and L six A five and replacing it with L six A three with quote unquote overwater structures must be graded in compliance with state and federal law. That motion failed. The next motion that was approved was motion by Boats and seconded by Regan to nope, that one failed. My apologies. The next motion that was approved by was accused seconded by Boatsman to amend L four M to include an amendment to section M adding be of the lowest intensity needed. Adding incidents to the emergency lighting required. And adding to the fifth item seasonal decorative lighting beyond 30 feet of the ordinary high watermark. Those were the amendments that were approved.
Thank you very much, Deb. All right, with that, I will go ahead and call the votes. Deputy City Clerk, if you'd like to call the roll.
Okay, Commissioner Boatsman?
I have a question. Sorry. Dan, I didn't get my hand up fast enough.
Sorry, what's quickly we're calling for the vote. So what's the question?
Well, I realize we're calling for the vote, but I I I was listening to Deb and I want to double check. I can't remember. Did we have no changes regarding planting? Was there was there not a change in regards to that?
That is my recollection.
No.
That motion failed for three.
And then the other thing I heard you say, Deb, is that Mike Murphy's motion to require a grading according to state and federal law. I think I heard you say that failed.
No, that's that was approved.
That's approved. Okay, good. All right. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, with the main motion on the floor to approve the draft regulations as provided in attachment A as amended. Deputy City Clerk, if you wouldn't mind, please call in the role.
Thank you. Commissioner Boatsman?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Cuse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hubble?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rishis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent. The draft regulations as provided in attachment A. And I should actually clarify, this is not adoption, but rather a recommendation to the city council has been approved seven to zero. Thank you all for the great dialogue around this topic over the last few meetings. Uh, great, that'll bring us to, I think, the last two items on our agenda, which are under other business. Allison, do you have anything for the deputy directors report?
Yeah, just a couple of things really quick. First, I just wanted to say thank you to you, Chair Hubble, and to Commissioner Curry for your service. I know you're both this will be the last meeting for both of you. So thank you very much for all the work you've done to volunteer for the planning commission. We really appreciate it. Also, we've got a couple of new commissioners that will be joining us at the next meeting that were appointed just this week. Angela Bataso and Chris Galls will be joining later this month. Our next meeting is scheduled for June 28. And I wanted to remind you all that at that meeting, it will be our annual chance to review the commission's bylaws. And we'll also be electing a new chair and vice chair. So start thinking about if you'd like to nominate someone for those positions. Um, let's see. Also, at that meeting, we will start our review of the economic development element of the comp plan. I think the work group is having a meeting about that tomorrow and assuming they they wrap up their recommendations at that time, then we'll be moving that forward to the commission in a few weeks. And that's all I've got.
Great. And since you brought up the summary, I was just gonna read for the group. I realized that when I sent my letter to the to the mayor that we can't like send out to the whole planning commission and like we're kind of restricted to sending it out to everybody and forgot that this wasn't distributed. But just for a little background on my decision, I had one year left on my term as a commissioner. And I have found myself in the last few months of those of you that know outside of work, I took a new job back in the fall and have found myself in a situation where I've been continuing to just add more responsibility in my work that's taken my attention away from my responsibilities here. And just didn't think it was a felt that it was the right time, given that it was the open recruitment season that this would be the least disruptive point in time to step away from my position here. So just for you all and for the record, I'll just briefly read the the short letter that I wrote to the mayor. It is with very mixed emotions that I've decided that it's time for me to step away from my position on the Mercer Island Planning Commission. Recent changes to my professional career have left me with less time than I feel is required to fully participate. My resignation will be effective immediately following the planning commission's special meeting on June 7, 2023, which will allow the council to appoint a replacement during the regular recruitment process. I've served the public in some capacity for over 20 years. 10 years with the City of Newcastle as a planning commissioner, as the deputy mayor, and for the last nine years as a member of the Mercer Island Design and Planning Commissions. It's been a privilege to have been trusted with the opportunity and the responsibility of serving my neighbors on the island. And I'm humbled by the people that I've had the opportunity to serve beside over the years. Each one of you, I have learned something from. I'd like to thank you and the entire council, present and past, for the opportunity to contribute to the island in such a meaningful way. And at some point, I look forward to serving the community with you again after I complete this chapter in my career. Sincerely, Daniel Hubble. And to that, like I just want to say, some of you I have served with a little bit longer than others and we've been through a number of things and I know we don't always see eye to eye specifically on the issues that come down and you know, there's there's times when we've all been unified and other times when we haven't. And I've learned from all of those and I really appreciate the thoughtful conversations that I've had with with each of you, both here on the dais in person, here on the dais virtually. And personally, when we've had the opportunity to speak outside of work. So I really appreciate all of you and what you've contributed to my success in 20 years of of being a part of the community. And you know, one thing I I didn't say, which I I I you know, neglected to include as a part of my letter. I, you know, oh, oh, neglected to include as a part of, uh, my letter was just my thanks to the members of the city staff of, both past and present that have been, um, just amazing with the time and the coaching on everything from leading meetings to helping me understand, uh, topics that I wasn't necessarily, um, having a strong command of. So I just, uh, for all of you that I've worked with, Adam and Allison and Molly more recently, since you've been here. Um, just all of you, thank you very much for your, your time and collaboration and um, I'll look forward to working with you again sometime in the future and, um, I know that you as a commission are in good hands with the staff that we have representing us. So anyhow, thank you, everyone.
So Dan, uh, I just want to share a few thoughts, uh, myself. Um, I joined at the end of twenty twenty and it's hard to believe that I am now the second most senior member. Uh, the only person ahead of me on the list is Carolyn. But I want to say that it's really been a pleasure to serve with you on this commission. Uh, you've been a steady hand consistently, um, and I think you've demonstrated a tremendous amount of patience in dealing with all of the issues, pers- all the personalities uh, and, uh, you know, everything that's come before us. And frankly, for me, it's hard to imagine meeting without you as chair. Uh, and you will be missed. So thank you very much.
Well, I, I appreciate that and, uh, um, I'm not sure imagining, uh, uh, meetings, uh, without me is, or with me being gone and imagining, uh, me being there, it's just going to be a different, uh, it'll be a different, different thing, but it's, uh, I think different is, is good. Sometimes it's good to, to hand things off, so. Carolyn?
Want to call on me one more time?
Yes. I'll leave you with the final word. How's that?
No, somebody else will have something to say. But, uh, I've been serving with Dan for six years and, uh, you know, it's just, you've always been a, a really skilled chair, Dan, and, um, even when things are rough and hot, you've been able to sort of keep a, a, a little bit of lightness and, and keep some fun going, you know, in our meetings and um, uh, um, I even agree with you sometimes.
It does happen.
Times. You often have a very wise perspective and your experience in working in, in volunteering with cities is apparent. So, um, wish you the best of, of everything and thanks so much for your service and yeah, it'll be different not having you around. It's, you've been here as long as I have, so. Thanks.
Thank you, Carolyn, and I look forward to seeing you in the neighborhood, uh, on occasion.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Um, with, uh, with that, thank you all for the words and I look forward to seeing you here in the community and at the farmer, don't forget about the farmer's market on, uh, Sundays where I ran into Victor this week. Um, so I, I look forward to seeing you out in the community in, in other capacities and, uh, really like truly, this is, is heartbreaking for me, but I really, uh, found myself struggling to even take uh, what little time is required to put in to do the homework and things this, this last few months and didn't feel that that was fair to the rest of the community, so. Thank you all for your support and I look forward to seeing what happens, uh, over the next, uh, few years. I'll, I'll keep an eye on things, uh, as a normal lay community member. Uh, so with that, uh, Allison, do you have anything else from the staff perspective that needs to be covered?
No, that was all we had.
All right, well, with that, I bid you all adieu and for me, it'll be my last time saying, uh, it is now eight fifty-seven PM and, uh, this will mark the conclusion of my final planning commission meeting. Thank you all.